Thanks, Nick. Okay, seven o'clock on the dot, assuming the clock is correct. A vote on the minutes from March 12th?
So I make a motion that we
Go right ahead.
Minutes of March 12th, March 11th. It's different on the agenda to the minutes from March 12th, 2025.
I will take what says on the minutes, not what it says on my agenda.
Yep.
Second.
Are there any comments or corrections? All in favor? Thank you very much. We have no members of the public for comment. Directors' report.
Okay, so I don't have a ton of super exciting news, but as I mentioned, we are, I did speak with
John.
John from Gail today. We, so we received access through DA Sullivan to their, I don't know if you call it project software, projects. It's where they would upload project documents.
Project management software.
Project management software. So that we could get the type of information that we've been requesting from DA Sullivan. So we, having received this access to the system, the actual work going through it and then downloading. And it's not, as far as we can tell, the access that we have just doesn't allow us to just grab it all, like grab folder-sized chunks of it and pull it down. It's going through each line by line, whether it's all of the request for information or the submittal information, and then downloading it over time. Which is very time-consuming, and if it's, if it's, I think it's a likely patron, just walk in, so I may have to jump up here in a second. If it is the, if it's John, if it's Gail that does this work going through and painstakingly downloading this, we're going to get billed for it. I can do it, or someone from the town can do it, but I don't know what I'm looking for. I don't know what I'm looking at, and I don't know what's useful and what's not useful. So one way or the other, we kind of have to have some guidance from John to be able to tell us what we need. I had asked Mark, or actually, the person that provided the access, which is the office manager in Mark's office, if we could, one, this is based on what John requested, if we can get additional logins to this system, which will allow John and someone else from his staff to go in. He has, I guess, some people that maybe are students, I'm not sure what the deal is, but if they have some people in the office, they could do this work and they wouldn't have the charges, you know, to the degree that they would if they have a professional working. So that's one possibility, and then the other possibility was, you know, the other thing that I've asked DA Sullivan's office for is a lot of the missing pieces of information that are in that, that are not in that system. So there's no, there's no email in there, there are not like the daily work logs that Carl Ferguson created when he was the clerk of the works, taking like all of the, you know, the progress of what happened that day, pictures, all of that. None of that is there. So there are a whole bunch of pieces of useful information that we would have hoped to have been able to have access to, that is just not there. And so we're again having to push Mark and, you know, just DA Sullivan gently to say, you know, these are things that we're asking for. And he's, he, you know, with all due respect, I mean, I think he kind of knows what we're looking for and is not really volunteering more than what we're literally asking for. So we've had to get more specific and say, do you have this? Do you have that? And so hopefully they'll be, they'll be helpful in that regard. In the meantime, we discovered that we have a couple new spots where the roof is leaking. I've shared that, shared that information with Mark. He mentioned a little while ago there, yeah, this is the library. To be continued.
Who is Mark?
Mark Sullivan. He was the
OPM.
That's the OPM? Project Management?
Oh, no. Spotters Project Manager.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, where was I? What was I saying? So we have a couple of new leaks, I've mentioned those to Mark. Mark did ask in a previous conversation with Mike and myself about what had been discovered, what we have, you know, waiting here to repair the roof. And he was wondering if it, if the original source of the leaks was the clerestory windows, which were re-caught.
Where are these new leaks?
The new leaks, the two new leaks that we discovered were in the large storage closet, which are at the northeast corner of the building. So it's on that same low sloping roof, but it's down at the other end. And it's another couple of, it's two small spots that are the size of the one that I can't see from where I'm sitting. But they're, you know, they're minimal, but they were there. And I feel like I've looked in that room and have not seen them previously, so. So I'm keeping him abreast of all of that every time it comes up, because he did mention it. And I, you know, I gave him the diagram of the building and said, these are where we're having leaks. They're not proximate to the clerestory windows. They are just, you know, issues with the roof. And I sent him also the pictures that Rivet provided of the roof, you know, where nails or fasteners were coming up through the, through the shingles and creating, you know, a point of entry for moisture. So he's aware of all that. As I mentioned, we will be have, I don't have the notes with the dates, but John is hoping to have a schematic design for the proposed roof sometime in later April. He said April 18th. From there, they send me a schematic to the cost estimator. The cost estimator will have it turned around within, I think he said, three weeks. He's hoping that he will have a full package for us to evaluate the design and the cost by the time that we meet in May. By the time the trustees meet in May. I let Mike Mason know all of this, he's pretty much CC'd on most of the correspondence. He's aware of it, so if we can sort of telegraph that to Town Council to make sure that they are aware that this is coming, so that they can, you know, so we can start looking at what, you know, the cost benefit of, of this in light of that information. So that's all coming along. Is there, does anyone have a question about that specifically? No, okay. Our operating budget, at this point, I'm not really sure what's happened. I haven't watched the latest. Well, actually, we have an appointment to go before the Finance Committee tomorrow at 5:30 PM. DPW is also on that agenda, I think we're going before DPW. So I believe we'll be going pretty close to 5:30, if anyone is
And that's next door, that's at the 5:30?
Yeah, and it's, I guess you can, it's hybrid, I guess, as I understand it, you can go remotely or in person. I'm planning to go in person. I do have, so, I mean, I did have a meeting with, with Shabil Parmaar, our liaison from the Finance Committee. And we had a very, you know, productive, good conversation about it. He did sort of confirm my sense that there really is no point in going before the Finance Committee to say, to plead a case for more resources, because really it's a question right now of whether they'll even be able to maintain the current level of resources. And I don't have any updates about that, I don't really know the, you know, the current situation. But our appointment is tomorrow to talk about the budget, to talk about how busy we are. I do have like a short PowerPoint that I actually, from talking to Jennifer, I'm just going to distribute to the board on paper, because I don't, I don't know what the setup is tomorrow, but it's not going to be the typical setup that they have for select board meetings. So it's just a very simple thing with like five slides that talks about, again, sort of using a comparison that I've used before of how busy the library was back in, say, 2019. That's the specific year I was used, because it was sort of like before, you know, the last normal year before the pandemic, before all the disruption of construction. And, you know, and we were, we were pretty, those were, those numbers were high for us. Those last couple of years were good ones, we were very busy. And sort of about it, you know, at capacity, what we could do. And then we moved over here, and then we added all of these additional tasks, and we've seen the traffic through the building up considerably, the number of circulation.
Everything with this space?
The space, the number, yeah. And so I have, one of my, one of my slides just sort of shows the number of appointments for meeting spaces. It's over a thousand in 2024, over a thousand. And the fact of the matter is, in 2019, when we were in the old building, the number was zero, because we didn't have any such space. So it's just like, you know, you really can't argue with those numbers. And the fact of the matter is, is that if there is any sort of budget cut or even, you know, even in the case where we just are level funded in the face of, you know, inflation or anything else, we just can't do as much, we just can't keep up with numbers that continually increase. So I just want them to understand that, hopefully. And, you know, and members of the public as well, that are really kind of doing the, up to the limit of what we can do with a number of people that only is, you know, as opposed to the way it was in the old building, 3.5 versus four, you know, it's, it's barely increased compared to the amount of busyness.
I didn't call and ask, like, I had some questions, so I called a select board member and asked, like, the direction this is going, and like, it sounds like folks are going to have to make a choice about whether they want an override. It's leaning towards like that choice of an override. So I asked specifically, from my own knowledge, maybe all of you knew this, I don't know, like, would it be divided out, like, you know, like, well, we want to fund the library, but we don't want to fund this? And it doesn't sound like that's the case. Like, it sounds like, from what I learned, and I could, it could be, you know, that it changes, I'm not trying to, that it would be like an override to fund, like, what the needs of the town are. Like, everyone's going in together. Like, I wanted to ask, because I've been around in the town before, where people are fighting each other, right? Like, departments are fighting each other. And, and I would like to see everyone kind of join together and be like, this is what we need to operate for the town, rather than like, you know, sharks.
That is, that seems to be
That's what I was told.
In direction of the conversation. You know, who knows what kind of proposals get thrown out there?
Yeah, right, exactly.
We could solve it if we just did this, or we just did that, kind of magic bullet thinking. But, but so far, the leadership around the conversation seems to be leaning towards, you know, kind of a collaborative and informational way of, you know, letting everyone know what's at stake and what, you know, what we would be missing out on, what we'd be losing out on if, if things were dramatically cut. But the fact of the matter is that, that, you know, if you've read the stories in the, in the local press about like kind of what's driving this and why it's driving in every community, it's because of health insurance costs
Right.
That are just like massively increasing in the past couple of years, especially this year. But then, you know, you combine that with, you know, consumer sentiment and just about what's going on with the economy and people watching their retirement strain, you have to wonder how much
Right.
The degree of willingness to vote for an override there is, it's just the timing of it's terrible.
No, I get that, but it's, it's good that even if that's terrible, which unfortunately it is, that we're not also fighting, because we've been here in situations where people are pitted against each other. And I think, I was happy to hear that, you know, kind of the voices to come together, and I hope it is, because I think
For the operating budget, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have any meeting with the Select Board, or is that the meeting?
Finance Committee tomorrow.
Committee, Finance Committee.
So it's just the Finance Committee, and it's definitely at 5:30?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry I won't be able to
It's okay. It should not be a long meeting, there's really nothing, as far as it goes. I mean, our budget is very simple, it's very, you know, it's not a complicated budget with a ton to dissect.
I might be able to join you tomorrow.
Great, that would be wonderful, if anyone can, that's wonderful. But I'm not, I'm not overly concerned about it, it's a very simple message that we have to get across. So we have that, one bright spot, and this is, again, this, it's a bright spot with not a silver lining, but a gray lining, which is that we have an opportunity to apply for a Massachusetts Cultural Council grant from the state, and I believe I may have mentioned this at the last meeting. But it's a grant that is an operating grant, and the operating grant can be renewed for, it almost like automatically renews for, I believe, for four years. The issue here is that like the cuts to, to the, you know, to library services at the, at the federal level, I don't really understand how the Mass Cultural Council grant, or the, what Mass Cultural Council is funded, what the combination is of, you know, state versus federal, what grants may disappear because of costs to the endowment for the humanities. I have looked this up, I haven't really seen anything about Mass Cultural Council being affected so far. I haven't seen any press releases. So I'm hopeful that this is something that will be available to us, but I've applied for it, and I'm hopeful the grants, the grant amounts start at $6,000. So even if we got the minimum amount, that would be, you know, that would be super helpful.
It's also nice, we should make sure we let people know that, like, when we apply, when we talk about our budget, that we, that you are doing that. Because it says like, that we're trying, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we'll pursue any, any available avenues. And that would be, you know, a benefit to the town if we were able to get
Right.
That and
But even if we, like, I think even if we don't wind up getting it, it's important they know that we're trying, that you're trying, or applying.
Yep. Yeah, long-range plan, I apologize for having to kick this down, we're in by, for another month, but we had, we had some unexpected things happen this past month with, you know, staff being out unexpectedly. And so we were just, you know, we were just very flat out this month, and I didn't get as far. I have been working on it, and I'm very happy with the progress that I have made, but it's just going to take me some more time. The, okay, I went through the roof evaluation, accessibility.
Hold on.
Yes.
The CFWM? Are those actual real values that just, you know, sorry? I'm just wondering, with the market going down so significantly this last week, how has it impacted these funds?
I, very, so far, very little, but, you know, I checked this, you know, like a week, close to a week ago, before a lot of the major stuff happened. I was surprised that they were only down by $1,000, $2,000 in each case. They were, they were relatively unaffected so far. Who knows where they're at now? And I don't know how quickly they update their, you know, those balances. I'm sure it's not daily, so probably it's lagging behind. The accessibility, I'm not sure if that was on the agenda for tonight, but I just wanted to mention that, as far as that went, the only thing that I have been able to get to on that so far was to get in touch with the vendor that provided the rail signage outside of each room and to provide them with a list of the signs that had been identified as needing to be added. So I gave them that list, and I'm waiting to hear a quote from them. They're a local company, as I understand it, and hopefully, and so far, they responded right away. Hopefully they will be responsive, and the quote will be relatively affordable, because it's a very small job. But that's the only thing that I've had a chance to, to work on, as far as that went.
And then the other, in terms of the accessibility of, we had sent an email to Scott, the DPW director and CC, and a bunch of other people, and no word from Scott at all. Not to Patrick, not to me, nothing, just dead air. So I guess at some point, we need to decide how much of this is worth really pursuing, since no one else in Town Hall, but what we can tell seems very concerned about the accessibility of town buildings. So, and then there's the big budget items also, which I feel like, at this point, we need to wait until roof issues are resolved and we know what really is left of money that the library has available. So I guess as a group, we need to decide how much do we want to pursue town folks to help us with some of the other accessibility issues in that list.
I think it would be appropriate, since it's been a month, to resend the email and maybe acknowledge, things have been busy, it's budget season. Can you at least let me know when you will have an opportunity to take a look at these things and let us know if you can be helpful?
Usually, I found in this situations where, again, especially when a lot of people are CC'd on them to, to simply, you know, a month later, to drop another line and say, just looping back to this, it doesn't look good to leave something like that, and just completely not, not reply to. So I think just a gentle reminder for now, and then we see how it goes. But as far as it goes, I mean, I think that there are a number of things, I mean, again, I personally can't fault anybody else for their, for that, you know, the level of work that they're needed to do, possibly short-staffed and everything else. So, but as far as it goes with this list, you know, I feel like as long as we're making progress on it, as long as we're doing a little, you know, as time allows, and going through it to the point where we get to the end and can't do anymore, because it's out, it's just too much, it's out of our hands, the next level of things are, are probably things where if we really felt compelled to, we could solicit quotes ourselves, and if we intended to pay for these things out of resources that we had, it wouldn't be a big deal to call, you know, or get quotes for contractors that either we have worked with in the past or that we can get names for and see if we can get the quotes and then decide how to proceed. I don't, I don't know that it's necessarily any more efficient to have DPW do it. It would be nice for them to pick up that load, because it is, you know, more in their wheelhouse than ours. But I mean, as far as it goes, I think some of this we could do. Other things, maybe not. I don't want to mess with the parking lot, I don't want to mess with the curbs, because that's going to be something where if it gets messed up, they'll be, you know, they'll be upset. But as, as far as some of the other things like, I don't know, like certain things with
Changing the height or
Changing the height.
Something.
Even changing the height of the toilet or something. I mean, that's still something that we can, you know, we can be in touch with the vendor, the plumber that has the contract. I don't want to do that, because again, I have no, I have no background in that, and I have no way of really assessing it. But worse comes to worse, we could take it upon ourselves, depending how important we feel it is in the moment.
Yeah, there were things like coat hooks and
Yeah, things like that, absolutely.
The sign had to be lowered or raised a quarter inch or half inch or something.
Is it normal for them not to respond? Something like this?
Not, not at all, I mean, I mean, but it's not, you know, it, all departments are busy and everybody's flat out. So it's not, I mean, I couldn't, have I ever not responded to an email that came a month ago and it passed me? Right, absolutely, I have, I have not responded.
This, how long did it take to say we can't respond until because?
Yep.
It seems sort of unconscionable to me if they don't respond.
It's inconsiderate and rude. I don't know that it is mean-spirited or intentionally ignoring us.
It doesn't matter.
Well
I'm willing to give them the benefit of the doubt, except a two-sentence response, I think seems warranted. And I don't know why we're not getting it.
Without knowing, without knowing, you know, what's going on in another department, I think, you know, it's completely just, I think, just sending that follow-up email and just saying, hey, you know, we're always
Could be human error, right? Just like in that, you read it, you thought, I mean, sometimes I think I responded to something and I walked away from my computer and forgot to hit send, and then it wound up in my, in my draft folder. And I've done that once or twice myself.
Absolutely.
I'm sure it happens, but this is a little different thing than you're getting a personal email.
I'm gonna say that personally, not during the work, right? Like, I've done it at work.
I just put in my two cents, I think. Yeah. Maybe resending it and saying
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Was there anything else about that that you wanted to mention about the accessibility? Okay, so the only thing that I would add that was not in the report when I sent it was that the, and, and, you know, this was DPW that arranged this and got this done. Gary had the folks from
Summerlin.
Summerlin Flooring in Amherst out to address the carpet. The, if you recall, there were a couple of areas where we had duct tape to hold the carpet down inside the, you know, the inner doors.
The duct doors, yeah.
And so there was a section, I guess, four, it was four square, four across by three, that they came out, they inspected it, they were like, something's going on under the, under the carpet. We can't really tell what it is without tearing the carpet up, so we can't, we can't know and we can't give you an accurate quote until we do the work. So they were out on Monday, pulled up the carpets, and discovered that what's happening underneath the carpets where they're coming loose is that there are two cavities in the floor that are essentially like the, you know, what's, what's here for these buried or, you know, sunk electrical outlets and wiring conduits. And so it turned out that there were two receptacles there for, for electrical wiring. And I, for the life, and I looked at a couple of the, you know, we have those big paper electrical plants, and I looked at it, I was like, I don't see anything off of it. Why would you put that right in front of the door? So I emailed Phil about it and said, you know, hey, do you happen to know what this is about? He said, well, I'm on the road today, but I'm assuming that, based on the context, that the point of those was to allow for, you know, the kind of anti-theft, the, you know, the
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. The detectors.
You know, the little things that set off the bing, 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 the door.
The security ghost thing.
We had never really even, I don't even remember that we'd ever really considered adding those. I think we just said, yeah, we don't need those. But they put those spades there, that if it ever was decided that we wanted it down the road, that it could be added without having to cut into the floor. So that was the reason, but unfortunately, the contractors, when they did it, you know, they, they just had these two holes to deal with, and they took some metal, I don't know, some flimsy metal plates, popped them on top, put a screw on either end, put some sort of like a concrete filler, some sort of a filler on top of that, so that it would all be level, and then put the carpet over that. And so the, you know, because it wasn't solid, oh, and then they also dropped a couple of, like, some blocking into the hole to kind of keep it from completely collapsing. But the, you knew, you could tell that there was something spongy when you walked on that section, and it was kind of weird. So that's, it turns out that's what it was, and it's, it's been addressed. The carpet does not match, because we did not have enough of the, the attic stock of this carpet to do that area. It looks good. What they, the solution was to do like a solid darker color, so it looks like a walk-off mat, like a big mat in front of the door, and it'll cover dirt, it'll be, you know, it's, it's, it's fine. But it is going to be a problem when we have isolated squares to replace, because we only had about a half a dozen to work with. So, you know, and they don't make the, they don't make the squares anymore. So that's the problem.
Are there things that can coordinate?
Can make it look
Random, but yeah.
They filled in the holes with
They did not fill them in, but they did, as I understand it, and I was not here when they did the work, but they did, apparently they did a better job of like securing the plates to the top. I'm not sure if they replaced the plates, or they just did a better job of like attaching them, but they were very loosely attached. And so the flexing in them was causing everything on top of that to crumble, and for the mastiff on the back of the tiles to come loose, and that's why they were coming away. So it may happen again, I have no way of knowing, but that was the sort of, the mystery has been solved of like why that was because we were like, is the floor collapsing? What's going on with the single? What's happening?
Roof, the floor.
Quite a good answer on your part, that you know the details of what happened there.
I was very curious. So I had to know. But, yeah, so anyway, that's, that's finally addressed, because that, that was a job that, you know, that tape had been on the floor for more than a year. And we requested someone do something about it.
Patrick, in your conversation with Phil, did you overhear back about LEED?
I did not. I did not, yeah, I also
It's a four-letter word, isn't it?
Since, yeah, since I was saying hello, I tagged on to an email that Jack had sent back in September, I think, just asking for an update, because now it's been, you know, what, another eight months or something? And just to see if, if there was any update, because I just, I can't believe that they wouldn't know what was going on.
It's like the second anniversary of the
Yeah. And the other thing is, you know, we, again, we've paid a considerable amount of money for the LEED administration, and I think we're entitled to an answer on, you know, where it stands, and just some due dates or dates that we could expect an answer.
Well, with that said, is LEED a federal program?
Yeah. Was it filed?
Is it? I don't know anything about these.
I don't know that we're asking.
I, it might be, so it might I, I, it might be, so it might be something where there's a little bit of urgency.
Or there was a little bit of urgency back in September.
But the money, the money itself, if we were to get grant, if, if that's what you're referring to, the, like, the incentive money would be coming from the state, so that's either there or it isn't, you know, whether they, whether that's, that, the construction money, whether the construction, um, grant funds are affected by, um, the, the IMLS cuts. Who knows? I don't know.
No, MBLC said specifically
Not.
That the construction grants were all state-funded and it's not dependent federally.
Okay, that's good to know, and thanks for following up on that.
Is there anything else to ask about the LEEDs?
Nope.
No, and I asked him in the email, there, because there was at one time, there was a, there was someone in their office that was sort of like the, the lead, the lead person, the lead leader. Uh, but, uh, the last time that I sent them an email, it did not, it, it didn't get a response, so I'm not sure if that person just no longer works in the office, has different responsibilities, I have no idea. But I did ask going forward, is there someone in the office that is the point person for our LEED application, that if we have a LEED specific question, I could just ask them directly and they would know the answer? And I haven't gotten any response to any of the LEED stuff, but it was just today that I sent them.
They, they did invite us, did anyone else get invited to their spring fling? We could show up there and ask.
Which day is that?
It's Thursday in Somerville.
This Thursday? Oh.
Yeah, JRA Swing and Spring Fling will take place Thursday, April 10th, at the JRA office.
Hmm, the architec's office?
Yeah, we go and ask about our LEED and I want to come to Somerville.
Where are your lactation?
You didn't get the email?
I didn't get it.
I did.
Um, I just have a couple of reminders and things, um, just so you all know, if you didn't already hear, that permission has been granted to continue to hold either remote or hybrid meetings through 2027, and the goal is to create actual legislation so we don't have to keep renewing this as we go along. May 1st is town meeting, May 20th is the election. My friend, history professor Audrey, is definitely pursuing this, and she has already enlisted several other UMass faculty members and gotten them to agree to vote for her. I said, you only probably need three votes, but we'll.
So it was too late for her to submit papers? It's just gonna be.
Yeah, April 1st was the deadline for submission.
Her name, just to keep.
Audrey Altstadt.
Can you spell the whole thing?
A-U-D-R-E-Y.
Because it can be picky if it's, and the last name.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. A-L-T-S-T-A, no.
Sorry, I'm just putting in my.
No, I mean, now that I'm thinking about it, I've, it doesn't sound.
It's in your email.
It is, yes, it's in my email, that's where I'm headed. Where is she?
We have to be perfectly exact if we do a write-in, I think?
So you need to get the three Ts in there.
You did say that.
Okay.
Altstadt.
A-L-T-S-T-A-D-T.
Is this Jack? Actually, this is why you have never run as a write-in.
And hardly, everybody can spell it. It's like. It's a little frosty. You could be going alone to the JRA party.
To her credit, she was wondering, I had said, well, you know, why don't you just print up some stickers? And she said, well, you know, if my name were Polish, it would be no big deal. But it's German, and so.
I thought Abercrombie would be easy to spell. At one time I collected, uh, collected all of the spellings that I had gotten up to that point, and it filled a card that big. So spelling is not our strong suit with names.
Well, at least not for.
And names are unusual sometimes, so.
Names don't follow any phonetic pronouns.
Well, it depends on the pron. Um, the only other thing I wanted to mention was the MBLC did send out an email and they have effective immediately cut off funding for a couple of things, not that they have yet been told, that they are not getting some money that was already promised, but they do know that there are other states that have been told and they have every expectation that Massachusetts will at some point become one of them.
What communities is?
This is the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. Their Institute for Museum and Library Services money. They have rescinded 18 explore grants that were just awarded in February, so presumably people haven't spent the money. Um, they've eliminated some Perkins, uh, Center for the Blind training sessions. They gave up the statewide membership in the United for Libraries, as well as a couple of other agencies. And the, um, United for Libraries is the arm of the American Library Association, that I attended a session for this afternoon, that, um, has training sessions for trustees and friends and that kind of stuff. Um, and apparently they have discontinued a grant to the Department of Corrections to provide some materials for incarcerated folks. So that's.
What percentage of the budget comes from the federal, from the, I'm sorry, museum, um, and.
MBLC.
To the Massachusetts ML? How much is state and how much is fed?
If I have seen a number or a percentage. I know that there was an email that said the number of people whose salaries were funded by that money. I know that some of those people are the folks who compile the statistical data that all the public libraries submit in August, that gets us our state.
Allocation.
Allocation. Um, you know, I think this was, there happened to be a trustee meeting. To some degree, this is low-hanging fruit that had less impact than other things, and I think they were just out of an abundance of caution, making some changes now, expecting that more harmful changes will come at some point. Um, I do know that the Commonwealth, or Comcast, the Commonwealth Catalog has a chunk of money, I don't know if the entire thing is funded by IMLS funds or a portion of it, um, that could certainly have a direct impact on our patrons, especially since I just ordered my first Comcast book. Um, and another thing that, that money goes toward are, um, the online books. And those, of course, have only gotten more popular, and those are in extraordinarily high demand, and they're expensive.
I think that's the, that's the part that, um, that the general, public, the general users of libraries would feel.
Right, yeah.
Commonwealth Catalog is, um, Commonwealth Catalog is essentially, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it's, it's essentially, um, a portal that allows us to request things, whether, you know, you, the public can do this, the staff can do this, but it's a way of reaching into the other regional library systems to grab items for our patrons that were not available in CMLs.
In CMLs, yeah.
And so it's a very useful tool, um, and we have, you know, we have some people that, I mean, it's a great service and it really allows us to, um, get nearly anything. And what we can't get through that service, we're able to get, uh, oftentimes from libraries out of state. So we really have reach in, you know, national reach, um, to get things for people, and that's, that's a great, great thing.
I, I've gotten textbook, like Sue has gotten me like textbook material and that.
Yes.
It was really helpful.
So it's really important and it's a great service that we provide, it, but it affects a very small fraction of, you know, our general, our general business in, in library usage. Um, to your point, Lynn, about the PMBLC staffing, I have the, I have the email from them right, right here. And so it's 13 out of 23 staff members at the MBLC are funded through IMLS. And that's five fully funded and eight partially funded. So that, I was surprised by that. I wouldn't have thought so much of their actual staffing, you know, budget would have come through that source, but what do I know? Um, so that's, that's unfortunate. Hopefully they do have some workarounds, um, for that to minimize the, minimize the pain on it. But yeah, it's, you know, it's terrible, terrible situation.
Oh, the other, I think I forwarded it, Andrea Campbell, the Attorney General, is, um, one of several Attorney Generals that has filed a lawsuit specifically regarding IMLS, as well as a couple of other egregious cuts. Not that anybody knows how long that will take or whether it will be successful, but at least our state is participating in that. And apparently enough people in the Boston area, um, make noise someplace that WBUR picked up the storyline and ran something last week.
Good.
So. It's up. I don't have anything else. Does anyone else have any other? What you're able to cover?
You're here for one more meeting?
Yes. Because that one falls before the election.
Gotcha.
So, motion to adjourn? Second? Oh, in favor? Thank you.